Grab the minutes right quick, we have February fourth, if you've had a chance to review those, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from February fourth?
I'll second it.
February motion is second, approve the minutes from the fourth, as presented in further discussion, seeing none, all pay or say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, and it's approved. Next, we'll jump into our FABIC CAT grader lease agreements. Ryan Tate is our representative from FABIC, and Ryan, good morning.
Good morning, I figured I'd get drawn first.
Oh, absolutely.
Alright, so, I printed out these quotes for you guys, because you've not seen these in the past, this is full spec on machines, and everything that each machine gets. So, the way we've done these in the past with the plea, which you guys already know, but we used to do these on three-year leases, fifteen hundred hours per year. Through COVID, as interest came up, and machine costs came up, our annual payments came up, so we kind of bumped those back a little further to five-year leases now, to try to keep the payment low. They're still, we're still allowing fifteen hundred hours a year. They've got premier warranty on them for a total of seventy-five hundred hours. We cover travel time and mileage for coming up on warranty repairs. These machines are tandems, they're rear-wheel drive only, they're two-hundred-and-thirty-eight horse, fourteen-foot blades, they're all spec identical. And at the end of that is, is kind of some of the finance numbers there. So what we've, where we're at right now, you've got a, you've got a machine going back in March, and we're not replacing it, because we replaced it in December to try to get on the three-three-three rotation. So no need to replace that one in March. You've got another one coming off in April. That machine's already been ordered, it'll be here in, I think, the beginning of March. So whenever April twenty-fifth comes around, we'll, we'll swap them out that day. And then you'll start your new lease. And then the next two that are coming off are October, we do not have those ordered yet. So that's part of, part of me being here today, we, we'd like to order them, you know, six or eight months in advance, kind of let you guys come in and get some time under your belt here before discussing this, so.
Ready for questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the finance options on, on the back page, or next to back page, that fifty-two-eight ninety-six, is that locked in for order, if we sign a sales order today?
So, CAT Financial will only lock something in for thirty days.
Okay.
So, we could give or take just slightly. There is no projections of anything going up at this point today.
Any potential issue with tariffs?
I, I don't know of any yet, I don't know.
These are coming in from Brazil?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. And then, do we have any graders that are in your shop right now?
Not that I know of. I think everything's running right now, isn't it? Besides forty.
George has called one on forty-four, it's, you could, some transmission fluid.
Yeah.
Okay, did we resolve the issue with the, that we had a while back? Something had broke on the front, the clutch, or on the?
Oh, uh, broke that.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's all done, okay, those were under warranty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright. And then, just for clarification, I think I know the answer, when, when you say fifteen hundred hours a year, it's really seventy-five hundred hours over five years?
Correct. It, it doesn't matter if you do a thousand this year, or two thousand next year.
Correct.
They don't monitor them like that. With these leases, there is a purchase option that you know of on the, on the front side.
Can I see?
Yep. There is a, we, we know what the residual value is at the end, so if you wanted to buy it after the lease, you know, you're, you're welcome to buy it and own it.
Like a buyback program, that deal you're talking about?
I, I will, well, for you to buy it, it wouldn't be FABIC buying it.
Right. If it's on lease, it's still yours.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Correct.
So, I will tell you that it's not the cheapest way to buy a grader, you know, to run it for five years like that, and then pay the hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, whatever it is at the end.
That price, right.
But there's a, there's a stated value at the front of all of these leases, on what the residual is.
So I think the issue we need to take up this morning would be to get a sales order. Do you have, you don't, do you have sales orders with you this morning?
Yeah, that's.
I assumed you did. So, any questions you have? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the sales agreements on grader thirty-one and thirty-two.
And then the next ones that are coming up would be twenty-twenty-eight.
Uh, yeah.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Mike, warranty service so far? Good, great? Fantastic? Good?
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve grader thirty-one, thirty-two, October twenty-five.
I'll second the motion to approve for twenty-twenty-five trades.
Okay, I have a motion second to approve the sales agreements with FABIC CAT for two graders. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Well, have you guys got it all figured out yet?
Nope.
Maybe in about ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six years past term.
Ten-year process.
Yeah. No need to make.
I've got an extra.
We need to initial, we need to initial.
Two, these are the exact same thing, and those will be yours.
Ryan, are you gonna be at C-CAM?
Yes, we are. There's my information, guys. I'll take one of those copies. This one, okay. Well, we sure appreciate the business of you guys, we've had a pretty good relationship, and.
Yeah.
Do you need these or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. Great.
Very good, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Let me know if you've got any questions or anything, I'd be glad to answer them for yous.
Mike, anything for us this morning while you're here?
No, just getting ready for the awful weather.
The next set?
Yeah.
Ryan, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
We'll see you in a couple weeks.
Alrighty.
See you, Mike. Alright, well, good morning, Chamber of Commerce. So, right now, I would be in general county business, and so I would now turn the floor over to Emily and Jason, and who's our sweetie there, what's her name?
This is Reese June Hafferty, can you say hi?
Good morning.
Reese June, morning, so awesome.
Okay.
Now, I just wanted to pop in really quick, I've got the Christmas parade meeting for twenty-five at nine o'clock.
Oh, okay.
But I wanted to let you know, we have reached out to the State of Missouri Chamber.
Uh-huh.
They said this comes up every spring, and that they are in the process of updating their use sales packs, information that we're allowed to pass out.
Uh-huh.
And as soon as we get that, we will make sure to send it over, and make sure to get this warrant filed as well. So, didn't want you to think we weren't thinking about you guys, so, it has its own schedule to come by today.
Great. So, once you receive that, Emily, do you have, is your board gonna work on this? Or are you gonna put together a committee, or what could be, what could be?
Probably work.
Yeah, I was gonna say, kind of unanimous to the board, we're all gonna kind of work on it.
It is a board project, to think that we said, Anthony's happy to give one of our Business Builder luncheons to you all in the, in the city, to be able to give out that information, and we'll make sure that you'll let the Chamber members know. We have those once a month, and then we also have the newsletter that goes out to, I think it's several thousand email addresses every Friday, and we'll put that towards the top portion of our newsletter. And then we're happy to push information out on social media, which I think is gonna be important as well. So, happy to do any of that. And then anything that the State of Missouri gives us, different ideas, et cetera, obviously, we can look at implementing those when we have more information.
Great.
Excited to work with you guys.
This is so important for our community. It's probably one of the few opportunities, if not the only opportunity, we have to bring the revenue back home, invest it here in law enforcement, and roads, and, and the things that are important in the county, and I know the city, for all the services that they, they provide, so, I, I think you're gonna be a very critical component in this, and we greatly appreciate it.
She'll happy to advocate and put the information out there to people.
Good, good.
Any other thing for the Chamber today? Anything you're worried about? Besides not bringing the ice in this mail? Maybe Reese can help us with that.
She probably likes the snow, though.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we're gonna head to the Christmas parade meeting, are you gonna stay?
I'm gonna stay.
Okay, sorry about my quick exit.
Oh, that, that's fine.
Can you tell them thank you and have a wonderful day?
My wife's.
Bye-bye, thank you, guys.
Have a good day.
See ya, bye, Jason.
Jason, how are things in the hospital?
Going good, actually, probably better for preventative providers than we've had in quite a few years. Had hand surgery start last week, you'll start doing procedures here probably in another two weeks. We got a near nose and throat, we've always had near nose and throat, but we're gonna actually start doing your nose and throat procedures in Lebanon again. So we're getting a lot of, our primary care, family med group is larger than it's been in several years, and we actually just made another couple more providers signing, I hope, in this week.
Good.
So, a lot of, a lot of good things are going on.
The boomer generations getting older.
Yeah. I, you know, you say that, that's the one thing that Mercy is doing, is we're opening a clinic in Camden Town, we're opening one in St. Robert, and we're gonna be opening one in Lebanon, and it's that, you've kind of heard it through the news, that sixty-five prime, to where, you know, we all know that doctors wanna spend a lot of time with everyone, but the elderly population, they really need that extra time, and that sixty-five prime kind of gives them providers. I mean, I'm gonna kind of shortly say, instead of only having fifteen minutes to sit there and talk with patients, they've got thirty or forty-five minutes to really vet out everything that's going on, and truly be the care provider they need. So that's a big issue. Like I said, we've already got the leases signed in St. Robert and Camden Town, and we're gonna be probably moving forward in Lebanon as well this summer or something.
Any issue with reimbursements?
You know, there isn't, there isn't any big issue right now. As we all know, we're like everybody else, waiting for different changes that come about. I will tell you, you know, one of the things that we're kind of, it isn't necessarily cuts that we're prepared for, but, you know, one of the things that the Trump administration came forward with, and healthcare in particular, is transparency.
Yeah.
And that's a lot of the reimbursement model, we all know, if you go to our ED or any ED, and you say, hey, how much is this still gonna be, they're gonna give you an estimate, and next thing you know, it's four hundred dollars more than you anticipated, and then trying to shore that up to where you know exactly what you're gonna have to pay is, is something that we're trying to see where it goes. I think that's the biggest thing, I don't think we're really anticipating any big cuts, it's just where are they gonna be able to go with this price transparency part, it's kind of the big thing. And of course, like you mentioned tariffs, I mean, that, that has a big, a big play on our supplies, I mean, even our dietary kitchen cafeteria area, when you look at the list, it's kind of scary how many vegetables and fruits we get from Canada and Mexico. I mean, we all realize we get a lot of fruits from Mexico, but it blows me away when you look at that list and see all these, I mean, we get ninety percent of our potatoes from Canada, that's kind of mind-boggling to be, and I mean, the tariffs are gonna have an impact on that, so, kind of across the board. So that's probably another thing that we're really looking, because it goes as far as drugs, all of your material, you know, surgery supplies, all the way into the cafeteria.
Thank you. Lynn, oh, good morning. Do you have anything for the commission this morning?
Nope. Just come up here with the voice, see what's going on.
Okay. You and I had a conversation the other day, you wanna elaborate on that at all, or?
Right now.
Okay, alright. Are you getting ready to pull people out of ditches?
There you go, using dirty words, Tori.
That's how you make your money, that's generating revenue, so, you, you watch what you say. You may.
Okay. Alright, well, with that, gentlemen, we are in general county business, so this is the commission of committee group right now.
The only thing that I have, of course, is, is Mike, and I've already talked on it, the deal I had, I don't know who brought this note here to me, as far as the handwriting and stuff, so, had a little bit of issue on a couple of things there, but.
He, he called a little bit ago, I was thankful, I guess he probably did call.
Okay, yeah, I called back to message this morning, okay.
Yeah.
We already talked about the shoulders of that, and stuff, so. The only other thing I was wondering about myself, our, our fuel truck and stuff, do we know what the capacity, we should ask Mike that while he's here, capacity of that tank is?
It's about what you see there on the, on the invoice.
On the highest amount?
Yeah.
But that's just given, it's not given gallons, it's just given cost.
So, on the.
So I didn't know what our, what our cost per gallon is, we need to figure that, that's why, putting down.
So, what I would recommend is you ask Mike to, for those invoices, and you'll find the cost per gallon, and the, there's three or four additional fees that we, we pay, and so we have a, we have a cost for clear diesel, we have a cost for the die diesel, and we have a cost for this regular unleaded, okay?
Yeah.
And those are reviewed monthly, they'll vary a little bit depending on where the market's at.
Right.
But what we found is when we bid that out two years ago, this was of the two bidders, this one was substantially more competitive, and so the commission elected to go with them.
Correct.
And their, their pricing hasn't really changed, those invoices are, are looked at again as we, as we prepare the bills for payment.
And the only reason why I brought it up is, it's basically just on the die diesel, so I figured that's on the fuel truck, it's servicing the graders, brush cutters, all that type of stuff, is because it's pretty consistent there, running for by, probably about four eighty-five on the average there, every time it went in, and it jumped up to where, you know, as far as dollars worth, and jumped up over fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Seven or mixed.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, but that wouldn't increase that much. So what I'm wondering is, because all these here are all dated the same for payout, they're all on the same check to be paid, so I, I can't, I don't have enough information to break down some of that stuff in my own head, just, just proof for thought. So, you know, I'm bored, I don't have nothing to do.
Okay. Then, then I would ask Mike to, to retrieve those invoices for you, and then I think that would provide the details.
Just wanted to check on that, because more than likely, just under what I'm thinking is, he probably ran his truck down pretty low, he had to get completely filled up, he ran a couple extra runs before he jumped in a different piece of equipment, and went to work in that aspect too, since he is a multi-talented employee, is what I'm thinking, but it just something caught my eye when I was moving through this room.
Sure.
That's really about all I have to admit it with.
Good question. We'll go into consent items now, so with that, are there any other questions in on the warrants?
No, sir.
Eric, give me. For those out there who are wondering, these are just the abstracts for the office holders, these are the fees that they, the lack that they present to the commission.
Sugar one in last week, the change is one line here. I got that for that, isn't it? I'll get that done today. Chamber? No. I'd have to be in the heat or something. Will be.
Where do you want those initial gallons at?
No, just that one, the settlement key one. The settlement's all in the question.
Well, all we've got here, but there's a lot to that one.
That's a settlement, but it's a monthly accounting for, in some of the new, or at least more recently new, I just noticed it on this one, the chapter one hundred of ABMs are also, as a listing, being included, reporting in there, so you can see. The visual on those. They exist.
We have more coffee back here, if you wanna fill your cup.
Missing coffee, he gone. We sure don't know. I won't say that out loud, he's not here to defend himself.
He already said, of course.
Did I say that?
He started, he started.
Well, it's getting better then, I didn't finish.
That's right.
Okay, the next.
I see your heart pumps came up just a little bit.
Yeah, I seen that. What, six of thousands? Alright, so the next thing we have is, we have a court order, this is a journal entry. The Lele County Commission is hereby authorized Kristic Card treasure of Lele County transfer a total twenty-five dollars from the inmate's security fund to general revenue fund to correct accounts payable entries. Give you gentlemen a chance to look at that, then I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve this order for the transfer of funds.
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
Yeah, we motion second, approve the court order as presented in further discussion.
Do we initial on that?
Yes, yeah. In further discussion, seeing none, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Order. Okay, will there be anything else? You go.
Just the, our sense of conduct, our sales taxing, the positive and negative.
Yeah.
And we're monitoring our health and transport issues.
Okay.
Not tonight.
Good, good. Okay, any, anything else?
Glad to see a little bit of that sales tax that come up, though. So I'm a little worried on that.
Well, certainly we need to keep our eye on it, yeah, it was in the black, so, but, pretty much razor-thin margin there.
Yes.
Very, yeah. Alright, so I would bring back the warehouse, I'd spoken with the sheriff regarding the sheriff's command vehicle down there. He gave the, go ahead, go ahead and get that sold, indicated would get it moved over here to the back lot. I've left a message with the health department regarding their two units in there, I've not heard back. But I think we, we need to probably assist in that, so, I think if, when, when we have time, then I'm going to ask the commission to go down there and probably move those over here.
I've got a truck, trailer and hitch, I'm moving.
Ready to go, okay, it might not be a bad idea to at least get, you know, a couple of them moved over here, to, to make that project moving forward. I think OEM would, would appreciate the assistance with that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have any issues with that, so, are we, with moving them over here, are we moving them over here, that way they can be viewed, be seen, out in the public, wouldn't do that, but we still gonna plan on trying to do something as far as yard sale, auction-wise, what do we, what do we think, and do we have our best?
Yeah, so, I, I think, Joe, the, the approach I think we should take is get them over here, make sure that any items that need to be removed, get, get removed.
By the people who actually, yes.
Absolutely, yeah. And then they're out back here, and we can stick a force sale sign on them, but maybe prior to that, we also inquire what we think the value might be.
Absolutely.
And then determine whether we wanna put a price on there, or best offer, or whether we go ahead and put sealed bids out there. But I think having them over here where people can actually view those, obviously, they can't see them in the warehouse.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, so that way we can timeline, and if we are going to basically put them out for a public auction or whatever, then I need to get that lined up and get that date set. And we can go from there to move forward.
What, so I think what I'm hearing then is we discussed having an auction at the warehouse at some point. These items, if we're fortunate, will have them sold before that auction takes place down there. Because there are other, other items, maintenance, we'd like to take down there as well, we've got a couple of old motors. And I think, so, so once we get those out of there and, and we have that front part cleaned out. Then I think that would set us up to have a more effective auction, right? And I think we talk sometime early April, was that late, late March, early April?
Yes, I believe that'd be all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any value to leaving a bigger auction sale with your items?
That's what I'm getting at, because I need to know basically how to make the sale bill, what's going to be in it, because we don't want to go making up, making up and people thinking that's going to be in there. And we've had that happen before too, and that does not do you very well.
And you could leave it out here and post it and say, will we sell it?
That's what I'm saying, we never actually set it up completely, that I know of, where we agreed that we are going to be auctioned, or we going to hand sell some things and auction others. I don't think we ever had that complete clarification, if I'm, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we did. On how, it was just primary discussions, I thought.
Yeah, so Joe, I, I live the opinion that we get the two or three trailers over here and try and get them sold.
And I'm fine, and I'm fine either way, I just need to know, because, you know, if we're going to have that March, April, now, I mean, we're February. We're forty-five, fifty days away, we need to go ahead and get that sale bill made, we need to go ahead and get things like that going, so people will know that it's coming and they can plan for it.
I think you could put them on there and say, subject to.
Prior sale?
Prior sale out here on the parking lot.
With our reservation number on it?
Yeah.
Or our sale number, not even a reservation, but a sale number. Because there will be some things, I think that we will have to put a reserve on, we just don't want to let them come and kick us in the pants on it. So. Okay, so yeah, I just want to make sure before I make up a list of what we're going to have, but I like that idea, we can do that.
Especially on those bigger, on those trailers, I mean, nothing else, we're not going to bring anything else over here in the parking lot and try to sell them.
Good, so basically just those, those mini trailer type.
Still here when the sale comes.
We'll tow them back over. You agree? No.
Joe, I'm going to be optimistic, we're going to sell those before we, before we have the auction.
Okay, so we're in agreement, so if we don't, then yeah, we'll tow them back over.
So let me ask you this then, so if we do that procedurally, they're turning in sealed bids?
So I think we need to get them over here, get any equipment out of there, look at them, try and get a crazed amount, if you will.
Yeah.
And then make the decision, do we want to go ahead and put sealed bids, I don't know what condition they're in, it might be that we go ahead and put sealed, sealed bids on them.
So not making that decision today?
I, I think getting them over here in daylight, so we naturally see what.
We'll get them over here today, yeah, as long as somebody's working out the hallway out there for.
Because it's, it's, there isn't sufficient lighting over there, and I don't know the condition of them, or anything like that, so.
No, I say we bring them over, but I say we put a number on it.
And, and then.
Instead of sealed bid, because we still have a reserve even with a sealed bid, can we do that, is that correct? If it don't meet?
No, not in private auction. You're going to have to take a senior.
Do what now?
Even if you put a reserve on it, you need to take a senior, that's your process.
Yes, but if you put a reserve on it, we don't have to sell it out, if somebody, say we got twenty, say we got twenty-five hundred dollars on it. And the best bid we get is seven hundred and fifty bucks, we don't have to take it.
Correct.
Okay, that's, just needing that clarification, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to just give it away. You know, if we're giving it away, I can find a place before to go with that, so.
Any, any movement on the generators?
I talked to him, he said he's definitely interested. You know, his questions were, do we want to throw a price out there, or he's going to just buy them all? Or are we wanting to pay him per chainsaw or generator to fix them up, hoping that we get a certain amount? Joe and I briefly discussed a percentage on the chainsaws. You keep one, you fix three. How, how, how do we want it working? That's the bearish way of working.
Yeah, so it's my understanding, most of those chainsaws are fifteen years old plus. And it's my indication that only two of them are working. If that's the case, I'm not sure it would even be worth our while to pay somebody to give us their opinion on those, give us an estimate.
And I'm kind of the same mindset.
So I, I think on those, I, I would just put them up in auction as is, and we'll probably not get much, much out of them. And then that individual would have the same opportunity to bid on as anybody else. And as far as the generators, I'm not so sure that I wouldn't want an appraisal on those. You know, if it's, you know, if it's capped at maybe so much per unit. You know, that one that was relatively new, that hadn't been in service for any length of time, I think it would be in our best interest if we had that one looked at and evaluated. Those older ones, maybe, maybe not, not so much. And then those two big ones, it was my understanding that they, they work.
Same here, my same understanding.
And it's my understanding, we're going to keep both of those? We were going to keep the bigger ones, was that right? Or one of them anyway?
I didn't get, yeah, I didn't get the feeling he's going to keep both of them, because the one with the light tower and stuff, with the lights in it, something with it. You know, I, I still like to investigate that a little bit more, but.
Okay.
I kind of, I didn't get a real good sense of exactly what was and what wasn't.
Does that individual work on the bigger diesel generator?
I'm going to guess he probably would. And you know, take it out of your mind about the light tower and just think of it as a generator.
Exactly, you know, power supply.
And I'm still sitting here thinking about your eighteen chainsaws down there, that you might accidentally get twenty to twenty-five dollars a piece out of the whole lot. How many are there, fifteen somewhere in that neighborhood?
I'm going to have to look again, best I could tell in the picture, I think we got, I think, I could count fifteen in the picture, but I'd want to go back down and hand count.
I'd almost rather have two or three working.
Yep.
Chainsaws out of this deal as I would to have three or four hundred motors. Because I, I was throwing that out there.
I don't, I don't really think that, like you were saying, with the age of them and stuff, and as is where it is, of course, everything is going to sell as is, where it is, how is. But with that being said, if we don't have one or four that we can crank, fire, show the impression, you know, make noise out of. I think you're going to sell the whole lot for a hundred bucks, and that's all you're going to get. But I think if we get them running, I think you're going to do, we're going to do a bit better with that end of it.
And I'm not even a hundred percent, you know. I think I could talk this guy into taking the whole show of chainsaws with us having two or four working chainsaws, that we can have for Roden Bridge or whoever.
Well, I don't, well, so Roden Bridge has their own chainsaws.
Right.
They're not, they're not going to want these. And then it's my understanding, the rural fire departments, some of those have their own chainsaws.
And they've got great ways of getting others for that.
And these haven't been touched, Eric, forever, and the last time I took a chainsaw in, it was probably, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy dollars. And I can't imagine even after we spend fifty, sixty, or seventy dollars, we'll even get that much out of them, so.
You're exactly right.
So in, in my opinion, we just move them on down the road as part of that auction, because we don't have a, a plan to use them beyond that. Roden Bridge doesn't need them, rural fire departments have those, their own, OEM's not going to use them. And, and true, we're not going to, we're not going to get much out of them, but I, I can't imagine somebody giving us twenty-five dollars for a fifteen, eighteen-year-old pole and chainsaw, I mean.
If I could get twenty-five dollars for the whole lot.
I, I think.
I'm talking per chainsaw?
I think it needs to be part of the, part of the auction, because we have to make it available to anybody.
Yeah, and I, and I still like the aspect of if he's willing, and it sounds like he is, you kind of talked to him for our previous conversation over there. That, you know, if he'll do, maybe work on about a percentage deal, a twenty-five percent deal, and I'm thinking that we're not out no money. So we're not spending the fifty dollars like you're saying, you know, harder to get something running, and then we get thirty-five out of it, because that's not good business practice, of course. But if, if we can, if he takes a chainsaw and he gets three running, and he takes one, it costs us anything, we've got three running machines.
I'll get the statute on that.
Good. Same as paying, but we're just bargaining instead of, money's out, so that's why I'm saying, I don't know, that's why I don't know how that goes, so. But I like that idea. Because I definitely know we're not going backwards.
Yeah, it's, those are paid with taxpayer funds, so we have to be aware of the process that.
And how did OEM acquire them?
Through the ISTR.
Mike in oh seven, they got them somewhere back?
A lot of them was in that time frame.
Okay.
And I don't know that they're quote-unquote OEM, I think they have just landed, probably so.
Mysteriously appeared.
So collectively, we want to run down there and look at those and, and see if we can move a couple of those trailers over here then, I'm good with that, are you, Eric, you in with that?
Okay. Get something done. It's been stagnant.
While we're down there, pick up each one, it's the one I want.
Did what? Oh, a generator?
Yeah.
Is it tagged with your name on it?
I don't know.
No, I'm sorry, that was a joke.
Those generators have been started for quite some time.
I'm guessing you bought the purple.
It'd be the newest, isn't it, that the newest one?
Yeah.
No.
It came from surplus.
No, we, no, 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 then that wouldn't be it.
Came from surplus.
So she probably got a little thirty-five hundred walk one or something. No, it's bigger than that, because you do it for elections, there had to be bigger for that, yeah. So it's probably the red one. She probably got the red one, not the light tire one, but probably the red one.
Yeah, she was one that was.
On red trailer, I think it is making a difference.
Before every election, he was supposed to.
Did you ever get to see it? Could you tell it if you seen it? Could you identify?
No.
You gotta be bothered, I got like five or six chainsaws in my shop that I haven't touched in years, and it's like, you guys talking about it, it's like, man, I need to grab mine and see what all the, if it might even run anymore, I got some that are twenty-five years old.
Sure, right.
You can't them up there fine.
Exactly, well, and that, and that, you're exactly right, because I got some that's twenty years old.
Yeah.
But I can go out there and, it hadn't been started, but in about fifteen turns, it'll fire up.
Yeah.
Now I got, I still have my dad sharpening the chain, because I'm no good at that. And of course now my dad can't do it anymore unfortunately, but my brother can, he tell me all about it too.
Why I'm in Syria?
Oh, yeah. Can't sharpen a knife, but I can use one, it's running.
Okay, is there anything else? Not that I have, okay, just FYI, on our senior tax freeze, we're running about a three-to-one ratio on renewals versus new applications, and it's been real steady. More people inquiring about the process.
Yeah.
So I look for those to, to continue to pick up and.
Got several, several compliments on how easy it's going, even the ones that are actually first time applying. They, they heard some stories and they said it's not like that at all, except it's actually almost enjoyable. So that was good. You know, so it sounded like we got the right people in front of them too. So that always helps.
Same with them, and they can't ramp up on this side too, and that's been fulfilling, that they're using that to be.
Right.
To contribute citizens.
Okay.
And you had lots of applications yourself, still?
Uh, last week was, or past week was a little bit slower, but there's been some people still picking on that.
You bet. You bet.
Public comments, items listed on the agenda. Nope, none, public comments, individuals who wish to make comments regarding items not listed on the agenda, Jason?
No.
Okay, alright, then we're going to recess, and we're going to go down to the warehouse, and we're going to see if we can move a couple of trailers over here. Jason, good to see you.